The lupe of the United States of America. And the tribute for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. The lupe of the state of New Mexico. And the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
In her invocation, Roberta can talk.
Let us pray. Good and loving God, our source of love, light, and wisdom, bless us as we begin this vital strategic work on behalf of the county. It is our privilege and our responsibility to support, foster, and advance the mission of Eddie County. Give us foresight by which we plan for the future. Give us confidence to discover and explore new possibilities. Give us wisdom to discern what is right and good and just. We ask for your guidance and grace. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. Lord bless and look over all Eddie County, its residents, county officials, and staff. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
What we're seeing here on the item is public comments and announcements. I did not receive anything in my office. Do we have any public comments or announcements?
Good morning. If you can't hear me, Happy Valley. I was here two weeks ago to talk about the condition of the park out there. There's been no improvement. We have trees down, we have people using the park. The other day I went by and there were little kids throwing their own tree. It's a safety hazard, guys. We need to get the trash dumped out there, get it cleaned up. It's embarrassing to go by, and it's a county park, so you guys need to do something about it. Just some, just some kind of notice out to people on what's going to happen out there. Put something in your paper, so people know that, that we're going to make a big difference out there. Thank you.
My name's Janice Newton, and I live in the county. And actually, interestingly, I just got Catherine Brown's letter yesterday, so I put my notes on the back of it, but it looks like you can address that pretty soon. So, okay, I just wanted to bring up that some of the things that passed in legislation are going to a referendum, the referendum process, which unfortunately, the gatekeeper there is Maggie Toulouse Oliver, and she's already trying to mess with one, which I think is the HB seven one. There's like several gender-affirming things, and voter registration thing that, or the voting deal that I understand a lot of the communities in the state have, you know, the voting people are against. So, anyway, a bunch of them are going for referendum. I just heard too that Eunice and God has, is suing the state because of HB seven, which is the one that says that no community can exit out of the thing without having abortion clinics. So they're suing the state in the, in the federal, federal Supreme Court. So yay for them, and I'm hoping they're successful, because it's totally unconstitutional. And I, I do not consent to any of the items that the governor signed that's going through a referendum. We'll see how that goes. And then the last thing, and I'm not even sure if this is where I can ask it, but, you know, in the sky, you see in the mornings, a lot of times, you see the chemtrails, the striking and stuff. Okay. Anyway, I'm concerned for that. A lot of communities have gone through testing what, what is in the environment abnormally as a result of those. And there's a lot of barium, aluminum, and there are nanoparticles. Aluminum nanoparticles are probably really devastating, because aluminum is the activity in vaccines that allows other stuff to cross that blood-brain barrier. And so I'm concerned, and I'm concerned why are we having those so much? And how it's affecting our environment? And where can I go to do anything about it? And I'm going to you guys, because you guys are kind of my first step. But anyway.
Next we'll move into service awards. Our first one we have is Molly Ridgeway from Lakewood Valley Drug Test Force, 20 years. Next we have Jason Flores, IT, 15 years. Next is Angela Vickery, Region Six, 10 years. Next is Pearl Ansura's Assessment Office, 10 years. Next we have Lacy Gardner from the Sheriff's Department, five years. If we want to take just a quick, short minute for a picture outside? Yeah. Next we have a presentation. Representative Catherine Brown is kind enough to accept the county's invitation to come and give a brief presentation on the legislative session, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Always good to visit with you, and congratulations to Roberta on her new position, and it's going to be great, so thank you for taking that on. So, we have finished our 60-day session in Santa Fe a couple weeks ago. There were 1,024 bills introduced, and so I thought we'd go through each one of those. We might miss lunch, but what I'd like to do is just address some of the issues that I think are most germane to Eddie County. And, you know, everything in a sense is germane to Eddie County, because it involves people when we do legislation. I think I want to start with some really good news, and that is that we were able to get $100 million for highway work on the intersection of Highway 31 and 285. That's a lot of money. I served on the House Transportation Committee. I'm a ranking member, and because of that, I get invited to meetings that normally I might not get to go to. And we do some, some pretty deep discussions as to where we need to put road money. So, we came in, the second highest total for funding, second only to the district that includes Albuquerque, so we did very well. So that will be helpful money. I know that we are all interested in making sure the southeast Lupe Road gets completed. We had some politicking over that one as well. I talked with Ricky Serna, the Department of Transportation Secretary, on two occasions, and he assured me that he would make sure that the money was provided to finish the Lupe Road. And so, rather than put capital outlay money into that project, there were some that went in by some of our area legislators, decided to spend the money or allocate it in other places, knowing that the secretary would be good on his word. And so I believe you received news that the money's programmed now, and we'll be moving forward with that. So that's a critical infrastructure project for our area. I think you may know I've served on that Transportation Committee on and off through the years, and it's one of the top priorities that I have is making our roads safer, so I'm very pleased that that worked out the way it did. So stay tuned, and we love orange barrels. I always tell that to people. We don't complain when we see them, because they need that we're doing road projects. The, the session as a whole was, as every other session is, very unique. Every session's a little bit different. This one was marked in part by a little more collegiality, in that we have a new Speaker of the House, Javier Martinez, and we have a new leader in the minority party in the House, and that's Ryan Wayne, an attorney from Aztec, New Mexico, up in the Farmington area. And so, they're young guns, and there was, I think, a desire to be a little less combative, still pull our positions and argue for them, but to, to have a little bit better tone to things. And on the whole, I think that, that held out for the 60-day session. So that was, in some ways, a nice change. We did have some big battles on, on the House floor, and some what I would call wedge issues, things like greater protection for abortion, transgender rights, things like that. Those are really wedgie issues, but you ask the everyday New Mexican, what do we need to do in terms of lawmaking to help this state move forward? Those are not the issues that typically come up. It's, it's pedestrian things like our roads, our healthcare, finding a doctor. How many times do we wait, weeks or months, just to see a doctor? So let me address that just a little bit. We went into the session, we, when I say we, I mean the conservatives, knowing we had to fix the malpractice law that raised the caps by 2026, I think it'd be up to $6 million of coverage. And we know, from talking to doctors, that they cannot even get policies that high. It's around the $3 million range now, and so the majority was not really willing to make any adjustments on that. The trial lawyers like it just the way it is. But in the last week of the session, finally, we had a coming together of the minds, and some meetings were held, and a piece of legislation was crafted to take those caps down from scaling up to 6 million, take it down to 1 million. Before we had that law and the changes in place, we had a cap of $750,000. That was the required coverage minimum. So by taking it to 1 million, it was a big compromise, but so much better for our constituents, our citizens. And doctors, many of them have already left the state, unfortunately, knowing that they couldn't afford to practice here. So some of the damage has been done, and we can't undo it, but at least we're making it a little more welcoming now for physicians, and that's other healthcare workers as well, not just M.D.s. So that was one of the bright spots of the, of the session, in my opinion. Sometimes we engage what we do by the bills we stop, and there were a number of them that were actually very harmful to New Mexico. One in particular is the idea of paid family medical leave. Now, small businesses have been decimated, and many have closed because of the lockdown due to COVID. Many of them closed their doors, many continue to struggle today. And so by adding additional burdens on small businesses in particular, it would make, it would just exacerbate the situation. And so we were able to stop that bill, and I want to give credit to Marion Matthews, a legislator from Albuquerque. When this was heard in committee, her vote was the one that stopped the bill from moving forward, and it was a gutsy move on her part, because the majority party wanted that to pass, and the governor has said she's bringing it back sometime in the future. But it's a bad idea, in the sense that you, a person, an employee, and if you're a businessperson and you say have four employees, and one of them says want to take paid family medical leave, for example, if you've been stalked, say you've been stalked, you may take three months off and be paid by the employer for not showing up to do any work. And that's a bad idea. That is a really bad idea. So this would be subject to a great deal of abuse and exploitation, and it would be very detrimental to many of our small businesses. So the good news is we stopped it, the bad news is it's coming back in some form. We've already been informed with that. Some of the other bills, we were able to stop. There were a number of anti-Second Amendment bills, and we were able to stop all but one. And these were also bad ideas, like a 14-day waiting period to purchase firearm. You know, but the real, the real challenge is how do we keep firearms, arms out of the hands of criminals? And until somebody can figure out how to do that, we need to stop assaulting law-abiding citizens' constitutional rights. And so we, we draw a strong line on that. We should not be infringing on constitutional rights at all. But again, what we were able to stop, and some of that was through some negotiations, and some discussions that were held, and we'll go into a lot of detail on that, but, you know, again, some of these bad ideas keep cropping up, and so we'll be having to deal with it in the next session. Want to talk a little bit about some of what I've worked on. We're all aware of the gross receipts tax revenue losses that have affected Carlsbad and Hobbs in Maine. Losses of perhaps $2 million a month of gross receipts tax that's not being collected in the cities. The counties have, in some ways, benefited from that tax change that occurred in 2019, went into effect in 2021. And it's referred to as destination sourcing, and I have a feeling every person in this room has heard this issue talked about at length. I will say this, that Senator Gaye Kernan and I, she was in Hobbs, I'm in Carlsbad, we went in knowing we had to do something to try to help the two cities. And so we decided to focus most of our efforts in the Senate with Senate bills, because it's a smaller body to influence, and the Chair of the Finance Committee, Senator George Munoz, had indicated his sympathy about, about these problems. And so we thought better to try and get through the Senate and then move it on into the House, and so that's what we did. I had one bill in particular, now the bill that created all the problems is House Bill Six in 2019. And the way I phrase it is, the solution to House Bill Six is my House Bill 126. And that bill had, had, you know, some headwinds against it. There's not an easy solution to this problem. But we thought if we could get at least a little bit of repair money in for the two cities, that that would at least help them weather the losses, and it wouldn't make up for that, but it would help them get through. So we asked for $25 million for Hobbs, one-time payment, and $25 million for Carlsbad. It's amazing that we were able to get the Senate bill I presented in the House committees and so forth, and we worked very much together on these things. We had no dissenting votes on either pieces of legislation that need to the House or the Senate, and that includes committees and board debates. That is, that was a surprise to, to most of us, because, believe it or not, there's a little bit of heartburn about Eddie and Lee County being oil and gas-producing areas, and some people just don't like us for that reason, and they vote against our bills. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what sometimes happens. But this time, I think we made a compelling case, every chance we got, why this money was necessary. The governor vetoed those two pieces of legislation, so we're back to the status quo, and the, the two cities are going to have to figure out how to, how to proceed. For Carlsbad, I understand it's about 30% of the budget is what they've lost in revenue, and that's significant. So I am a firm believer in preparing our young people for career and workforce, and very pleased to report that we were able to boost funding for career technical education from the initial number of 15 million, and then be statewide, up to 40 million. And I really pushed hard for this, every chance I got, especially since I served on the House Appropriations and Finance Committee. So I just kept harping on it, and we got it up to 40 million, but I'm not really happy with that in the end, because that's not enough. The career technical education facility in Hobbs at the high school there was $50 million, and most of that money was cobbled together from private sources, some big donations, things like that. So to think we can spend 40 million and really change the landscape, make CTE more accessible, is, it's just not enough to go around. But it's a start. And so when I go back in the next session, I'll be trying to increase those amounts as well. Unfortunately, the 40 million is non-recurring money, it's one-time money, and I made the point, every chance I could get, that we need to make sure the schools know this is a steady source of revenue for them to boost their CTE programs. So we'll keep working on that. But this is, if you haven't been to the Curtech facility in Hobbs, has anybody been there? Yeah, really? Y'all need a field trip. You really got to go see it. It's so inspiring, and they have about eight, between 800 and 900 high school students taking CTE courses, one or two, so they just walk across campus to this new facility. And in speaking with the people who are running that program, I have found out that the students are highly engaged, they're enthused about school, they're going to stay in school, and the graduation rates are going to go up. It just makes perfect sense if we do more of this. So that was one of the wins, I think, in the session. Another one I will mention, and it's in the letter that I think may have come to some mailboxes, yesterday, I just believe we need to educate our students about money matters, and make sure they understand how to make money, how to save money, how to invest money, what's insurance? Do you really need it? What are your options? It's a huge topic, many facets to it, and I was able to get that, I had a standalone bill to make this a requirement for high school graduation. The Chair of the Education Committee had a bill, and he actually took the elective proceed, for financial lit, out of his bill. And so I, I was a bit persistent about talking with the House Ed Chairman and his co-sponsor, who happened to be our floor leader on the, on the Republican side. They wanted no changes to their bill, that was House Bill 126. And I knew my bill wasn't going to move forward because of that, so I had a floor amendment prepared, and when their bill came up for debate in the chamber, I was ready to present that amendment. But I did go to them on several occasions before that debate, and I said, "Look, I think I've got the votes to pass this floor amendment." And it's rare to get a floor amendment passed, but this is not a really controversial issue, this is common sense, and what I consider good education. And so I suggested that they take my amendment and make it their amendment and introduce it, so it'd be a friendly amendment, and then we wouldn't have to debate it. So that's what they did. But then, end of the, end of the story, the governor vetoed House Bill 126, and there went their amendment. So that was unfortunate, I thought, as well. I think what I'd like to do, I mean, there's just so much we could talk about, rather than we just keep going on, if you want to ask any questions or target any subjects, I'd be willing to, to let you know what I know. So if you have anything that concerns you or anything, I'd be happy to, see what we can talk about that. Oh, come on.
Any questions?
Well, let me, okay, yeah, okay, questions? Let's do that. I'm going to have, I have something I will add later.
So when do you anticipate you'll have another opportunity to bring up this CTE bill or?
I will have opportunities very soon during the interim, because we do meet during the interim in committees, and I will be pushing to program any more money. And the statutory change, I think, still needs to happen. It needs to be in law, or it won't happen. Currently, we're back to the status quo, because the governor did a veto. Currently, only 11% of our high school students take it as an elective financial literacy, and that is not nearly sufficient. So I think it needs to be a requirement, and so I'll push for that. I, I honestly believe we can get it done the next time. If it had been a standalone bill, the governor might not have vetoed it, because I think she understands the importance of this too.
If I can understand the same subject, because I, I haven't been to this one in life, but what I was able to do was kind of Hobbs folks last week, especially her tenants. You're right, that sounds absolutely incredible. Students are engaged, they're leaving that school with real-world certificates, you know, they serve safe welding, things that they can get in the workforce. So anything we can do to help support you in trying to get that message further, because I just love, if everything about it sounds spot-on, you're right, kids are engaged and want to come back, and so their kids are in school, so they drop out ready, which is obviously a huge New Mexico problem. I don't know, they just hit a home run over there, and it's so cool to see and hear about, having some success in education in Mexico, where all that here is negative, it's wonderful to hear a positive. So thank you, and I, if you ever need anything else.
It's, it's a fight I relish, actually, because I really do believe it's the key to improving our education system. And so I did want to add, and we heard Happy Valley Park mentioned earlier this morning, there is some money coming your way for Happy Valley Park. It's $250,000. That was a request from the county representative Jimmy Mason, and I each put in half of that amount, and so you will be receiving that for the purpose of the park. Some years ago, I was asked to visit Happy Valley Park and see what poor condition it was in, and, you know, but now we have a chance to actually put some money on it, so I hope that'll help. I don't know if that's all you need for improving the park, but it should be a good dose of help. As far as money goes, let me pull out some figures here. I was asked a question in a recent presentation I gave about the session, if I think Eddie County received back a fair share of what it pays up to Santa Fe for, for state, state revenue. And the answer is of course not. For, forever, Eddie County has not gotten back a fair share. And so you all had a study done by the Arrowhead Center, and Commissioner Chairman Carlson is extremely familiar with that report. And what I did, I think you had an update done recently, and I used this chart from that report to explain to legislators how much Eddie and Lee County, those are those skyscrapers right there on the left. Is that the right? That's the left. That's how much revenue is generated per capita out of these two counties. Only three other counties produce surplus above what they take back from the state, get back from the state. Every other county is, is negative. Every other county is negative. They're takers, not givers. And so when I use this chart, I make sure this got into the hands, I didn't give them the whole study. I just gave them this chart, because I think this says it all right here. We're not getting back what we should. So back to the GRT issue and the revenue losses. One of the bills that I think has the most promise, and we're gonna look on the interim some more on it, is one that Representative Larry Scott from Hobs came up with the idea of how to distribute gross receipts tax revenue. His bill would take all of the gross receipts revenue for the state of New Mexico, take eight percent of that, and distribute that to all cities and all counties. And the beauty of that bill is everybody benefits. It's not necessarily preferential for one county or city over the others. Albuquerque would come out with a lot of money through that formula. But it's two pieces to the formula. One is every governmental entity, city, county, gets the same amount of money to start. That's sort of the base funding. And then the other part of the formula is key to per capita production. And so counties like Eddie and Lee would actually get more money back because they're contributing more. And that's kind of the nexus we're trying to create. And the governor indicated, and I didn't hear this from her directly, but through another source, that she's intrigued by this idea. And that she is, she has a pledge that she will help craft a solution to this GRT problem. So we're gonna hold her to that, and we need her help on that.
Can I add something?
Sure.
Just kind of a little information, you know, we're twenty-sixth in giving money back. We're second in providing money in the whole state per capita. The one thing that, when you're just talking about, other people get upset when you talk, you don't support bills, when you talk about coming from Eddie or Lee County. Well, you know, we produce a lot of money. And so I looked at a period of time from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-two as to what was the average annual increase in the cost of government to produce that money the state is giving it advantage of? And that amount was fifty-four million dollars a year. Our annual increase in cost of government has been fifty-four million dollars a year over that period of time. That is a lot of money that's coming out of Eddie County's pocket. And I think the state should don't participate in recovering that cost.
I like your idea. Very good. So I wanna go a little bit on the financials. Okay, so because mostly, mostly because of oil and gas activity, increased production and prices going up, the state of New Mexico had three-point-six billion dollars of extra money this session for building the next budget. The overall state budget is about ten billion, so think about, that's a huge amount of extra revenue. And of course, a lot of it got spent. I actually voted against the budget bill because it was too much spending, in my opinion. And it's, it's not prudent to go up thirteen, fourteen percent when five percent is considered financially prudent. But anyway, in terms of money going out through capital outlay, this was House Bill five-oh-five, and that, that's a good number to remember because five-oh-five is the Northern Area Code, and that's where most of the money went. So Eddie County, out of this, and this was about a billion dollars of school money for capital outlay. Eddie County got twelve million, Lee County got twelve million. That's about the norm. However, this year, McKinley County, fifty-six million. Rio Riva, twenty million, San Juan County, forty-three million. San Miguel, ninety million. Sandoval County, fifty-three million, Santa Fe, no surprise, seventy-three million. Burnley, two-hundred-and-eight million. Dona Anna, seventy-six million. And so we get twelve. And, and so there was a skewing of where the money went, and it went north by forty, most of it. And that is the power of the governor, that's what we're seeing here. If you wanna have political, involve yourself in politics, run for governor, because that's where all the power is. And, and just a, by the way, she decided not to renew the emergency health order, it expired on March thirty-first. More than a thousand days of the governor controlling basically everything in New Mexico through that health order. And so finally, it was allowed to expire, and I think it was one overdue. So I just think we should give credit to the hard-working men and women who are in Eddie Lee County, who produce so much of this revenue. We are trying to look into the future and see how long we think oil and gas will continue to do well. And we're doing five years, of course, that could change. There could be factors and variables that come into play. But if we have another good five years, we're talking of more, more billions for possible additional spending. One thing that was done right was some of the excess revenue was put into this permanent, service tax permanent fund, which is a good place to park that money because it earns a return. And it was supposed to be a billion dollars, and I think it went down to six-hundred million after the Senate started spending a little bit more when we gave them the budget bill they added to. So that's where we are on that. So the, you know, the fight continues, how do we get more money coming back? And we do our level best to make sure it does, we really do. We're not that many votes compared to the majority. Current statistics, forty-five members of the State House are Democrats and twenty-five are Republicans. So it's hard to win a vote sometimes. Anyway, I wonder if there's, again, another chance for any questions, what's of concern to you?
Just trying to digest all of that. You didn't do some, thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was a very interesting session, I will say. See if there's any, I mean, honestly, we have another thousand bills we could discuss. So you all, I think, have my contact information, feel free to either email me or call my cell number. And if you have anything you wanna know about, or any input you want me to have, I'd be happy to do that. We are going to have a thirty-day session coming up in January. There were some proposals to lengthen, it'll be a constitutional amendment that voters would have to pass, but to go from thirty days to forty-five, give us a little more time to work on this. And that, that didn't move forward, nor did the proposal to pay legislators a salary. And honestly, I think if we can't do a better job of governing this state and getting off, you know, last-in-education lists and all those kinds of bad lists, if we can't do better than that, nobody deserves to be paid, in my opinion. Let's just continue as citizen legislators. And I'm in the minority on that, a true minority, most people want legislators to be paid. I think this is what public service is all about. But until we show results, I don't think it's justified, quite frankly. Anyway, that's kind of a somber note to end on. So anyway, I appreciate you all very much, I appreciate the work you do. And I really enjoyed any visits I had from, from people who were, you know, up in Santa Fe, stopped by the office to say hello, say a prayer for us. All the interactions we have with people from back home are really matters. And we had a lot of students come up this year to Santa Fe, which is always very special, to get to show them the process and how their state government works. And really enjoyed every single visit here we had, so thank you for that. And anyway, thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you for coming in and enlightening us.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have another presentation from Red Rocket.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So it's time for our after-session update, and I can't think of a better person to follow on that. What I mean by after-session update for us is, for two years now, we have been contracted by Eddie County to run a campaign to inform some of the counties that contribute less to Eddie County's budget, to inform them on what Eddie and Lee County and the other three positive counties do contribute. And two years ago was when we started, just about, and we named it the Paid For By Campaign. Again, just a refresher, the name, the term, term comes from, like, when you do lottery tax and you have to say, "Paid for by Eddie County Lottery Tax below an ad." Well, we took that a bit further, and when you look at a road or a school in a different part of New Mexico, what was that paid for by? And in many instances, we can say that was paid for by oil and gas revenues from Eddie County. And so my first slide is up there, and it's just a quick overdraft year-to-date. And I believe it's fifteen counties here, and I can list them for you if you wanna know them. And fifteen of the most-taking counties, let's put it that way. We have reached six million ads have been distributed over three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand people. Three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand people isn't a big number even to New Mexico's population, but keep in mind, we are targeting counties that have lower populations than most counties. So three-hundred-and-seventy-five individuals saw our informative campaign six million forty-nine thousand times. And of that, we are on a dramatic increase from last year. A hundred-and-fifty-one thousand times did they engage with it. And that means that they liked the post, they commented on the post, they watched the video, they did something to engage with this social ad. Every year, we also are asked to target specifically the Roundhouse. And so we can put a fence around the actual building. And this year, the numbers were much bigger because it was open to the public, whereas last year it was not open as easily to the public. And so this year, we displayed seven-hundred-and-three thousand ads to ninety-two thousand people. And so I've been trying to, I'm looking for some data on how many people actually visit the Roundhouse during session every year. I mean, this was a longer one, so I understand there was probably more people. But ninety-two thousand individuals saw the ad seven-hundred-and-three thousand times. But the scary thing to me, that engagement rate, four-hundred-and-twenty-one. Only four-hundred-and-twenty-one times did someone in that building choose to interact with the ad. That's a much lower rate than we would have expected, and it's not on par with the rest of the state. Some of the things that happened that I reported to you last year were that when someone would see this ad pop up, they would, they would say something negative. Or they would say things like, "If Eddie County is contributing so much to the budget, or if oil-producing counties are contributing so much to education, why are we the last in education?" Well, it's not our job down here to tell them how to do education. But I will say that this year, the negativity has almost ceased. So more people are seeing the ad, more people are engaging with it, general citizens, that is. And there's less negativity coming back. And so I would say that we are reaching a tipping point for social media understanding. And the next thing that we would like to achieve with it is going after more elected officials, seeing if we can in some way find a couple of educators, maybe even road construction workers that would be willing to do testimonials for us. We're really good at getting you guys to do testimonials for us, but I would like to see some people, elected officials and educators from other counties that don't contribute, that know they're getting their money from us to kind of, you know, be a representative of their own population. Anyway, that's something that I'd like to see going forward, because again, numbers are increasing, engagements are increasing, except with your legislators. And so that's what the direction we'd like to go next, is actually put names and faces to actual people in those counties that we're running these ads in front of. Before I go to the next part of the presentation, is there any questions or things about this part of the campaign so far? Okay, keeping in mind, it's a social media campaign, so these are digital. At any time, we can, we were asked originally to run digitally, we can shift to different mediums if you guys have a preference. Right now, we are using the most common social media in New Mexico, and that's Facebook and Instagram. As much as we don't like it, that one is owned by a US company. And if the second you guys wanna explore out into a different social media, more than happy to do that. On the second page in the slide, I was asked to find artists to develop a billboard, and you'll have to forgive me on that background. The billboard is just a particle there, but it's to convey which, you know, which five counties are contributing. And this one I like the most, there's, there's four versions on here, so we can kind of scroll through them. But this one I like the most because it's easier to read. I was given that caricature by Wes here at the county in the past. And he said, he asked me to put that on here, just as the graphic itself, and it's self-explanatory, I think many of you have seen it. But it does, it's just highlighting the five contributing counties to New Mexico budget. And I was asked to see about placement between, I think it was Los Cruces in Santa Fe, and then Santa Fe and Las Vegas. But we haven't moved any further on the project, other than us just getting these drafts in. If you could scroll to the next slide for me. Yeah, it's just reversed, depending on which side of the road it's on, the same graphic. And then one more slide for me. And that's a second artist's design. We went out and had these contracted out. This one's a little darker, not my preference, and that's why I put the two gold ones up top. But again, these are just designs with different slogans, and I would welcome any input on these designs. And that's why I asked Steve to be with me, I think it's under his department now. But more importantly, just direction. I was only asked to design some billboards, and that's all I, that's all I know at this point. So any questions on that one, or comments?
Okay, question?
Sure.
Because I don't, I don't wanna, I don't speak billboard, I guess.
Sure.
But to me, is there, do people, when they're driving past those, is there anything you can put on there to make them go to Eddie County, whatever, I don't know what it is, but to where they could go then get some more information if they're interested? Or is there, you're going so fast, I mean, because we don't all drive fast, but most of us do, and you don't have time. I don't, I don't know.
Quick answer is yes, most definitely. The Paid For By Campaign is not being run from any Eddie County assets. So if someone clicks on it, there is no direct link to Eddie County or Lee County. And so we did not put a direct link on the billboard. But if you guys want us to link it to the Arrowhead Study or even the Paid For By Facebook page, totally doable. Yes, sir.
I think that would be great, that we could play EddieCounty.com, a web, whatever, we could
Sure.
Post a website where it would have the information from the Arrowhead Study.
Yes, sir, most definitely.
Because I think if I'm driving past it, I see the ad only, but it might strike that if there was something under it, like, I always think there's a flag we pass driving down the road, and it had a little, for more information, there was a red flag. Sure enough, I'm going to Google it and tell you the history of it, and it was kind of interesting at that point. So I would like somebody to be able to engage, because it might not mean much to a lot of people, maybe when they engage with it somehow.
At the point.
But it's gotta be an interesting, they're not gonna go to EddieCounty.com, it's gotta be something interesting. And maybe I can tell you, I don't know, I just think the more engagement, the, the more interesting.
I agree, and it may be time to come up with a new catchy slogan. Paid For By is not, you know, completely descriptive of what would pique someone's interest, so maybe we do come up with a landing page or something to send them to, I agree.
Maybe a little history of the old, the old industry, nineteen thirties.
Well, I think it'd be cool if you jumped to it, did you know X amount of these dollars go into your education, X money? And that way, it's impactful to that New Mexican that's looking up, oh, my goodness, had no idea if our school gets X order. I don't know, I just feel like, if we're trying to get this message out, and I want them to be able to understand what the message is. I don't think this helps, it wouldn't help me understand what the message is. Agreed.
Agreed, and it's a tall order, how do you put on one billboard that five counties contribute more to, and, like, they go so deep after that sentence? But yes, I agree, more information would be very easily put up there, or give it access. Yes, sir.
At a glance, it's gonna be hard to take in all that information. One thing I see that I don't think anybody's gonna see is the name Eddie County, of course. I mean, that's gonna be the last thing anyone's gonna figure out. But I don't know how you make that bigger.
Again, the direction I was originally given, and this is Again, the direction I was originally given, and this is two-year-old direction, was that we, we didn't want to contribute Eddie County directly because of negative connotations other counties may have towards us for whatever bias reason. We wanted people just to know the facts of like who's contributing, but again, creative, you know, we can definitely make Eddie County bigger. I, I give as much credit as y'all want to take, I was just originally told that we don't want to make that direct connection, but.
I love Eddie Porson Wagon, it's got, it's going to be an eye-catcher on any billboard.
Yeah. Could I get you to go to the gold one?
Getting that one to center on the Porson Wagon is getting them to seek the rescue.
Right. Yeah, and I don't know who the artist was, but I was told he hand-drew it, which is, this is not a final rendering of it because we've had to have our digital artists go back and start literally recreating it from scratch. It's, it's an amazing art piece, I think it's great, but it does have to be digitized now, so that y'all can use it wherever you want it in the future.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a river, a little cavalry, yeah.
Right.
I like, I just, whatever that, however you engage to, I said Eddie County, I didn't mean Eddie County.
Sure.
Because I agree, I don't know if Eddie County wants to hold our credit for it, but something that would increase somebody's opportunity. And that way, like, you know, gold's nice, orange is really pretty good. Just throwing noise out there.
You know, I like the gold color, but I'm afraid that the white is going to be washed out from Eastside.
Yes, they're right.
I like gold, or blue would be perfect.
Again, these are just initial concepts, so we're more than happy to, I will, the next step for me is, I'll get with Steve. I'll present him all of the concepts that have come forward, and I, I'm assuming he will get with you guys and give us more direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have IFB RFP Bit Awards, RFP twenty-three dash oh-three, annual audit services. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Oh, oh, sorry. We solicited RFP twenty-three oh-three on March twenty-third. We did have a short timeframe as we do follow guidelines. And so we opened these up shortly after, and the county did receive two proposals. Both proposals were dangerous, positive. We did go through the full evaluation panel, and with that being said, staff is recommending award of RFP twenty-three oh-three go to Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. With that being said, I will stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, just to put a little bit more context, as you know, the county has used Carr, Riggs, and Ingram now for several years. If awarded Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, the county would have remained three more years with them before we would have to rotate off, or required to rotate off per the state audit rule. So, we would have three more years for them if we had to rotate off.
So, so they're still within their time, I know that the state auditors use that time limit, so that's six years?
It's actually eight years now.
Eight?
Yeah, and we've had them, because they were able, well, not because they were able to, but they switched companies, they merged into a couple of different companies. They were originally a county consulting group.
Yes.
And they switched over one other time before they came Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, so that I want them to stay a little bit longer.
So, if they merge again. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve? We have a second. Call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into the training agenda, first, item of the position meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting.
Questions or comments, changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
NMB Commission Meeting Minutes for April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We'll have a second. Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
NMC expense approval report for March twenty twenty-three.
Do I have any comments, anything needs to be questioned? Motion to approve? Second? Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Okay. Next, we have new position request added Assessor's Office. Veronica?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're coming to you this morning to request another position to be added to the Assessor's Office. We are in desperate need of another data on Analyst Tech One. We have had over three hundred, or three thousand four hundred and sixty-four deeds, a hundred and nine subdivisions, and fifty-seven boundaries served based on the twenty twenty-two. And with the constant property changes, it's taking a lot of our other employees to help come into that department and help us out on getting those processed. And it, right here in this department is where it really starts, because we get our deeds and we change the ownership. A lot of those are through our sales, and then if they don't be able to get work, then puts our appraisers behind it, getting our, our values up to market value. So, it's a very important position. So, we're just asking to get, get a new position.
So, just like to do some numbers for twenty twenty-three. In January, we have, we have two data analysts in that department right now. We have a three and a one. Data one is our new hire, she's about ten months in, should be leaving soon on maternity leave, so that will leave our, our data three, which is our senior data auditor by herself. But in January, they did two hundred and thirty-seven deeds, February, they did two hundred and forty-nine, and in March, they did two hundred and fifty-three. And they still have sixty-six to do for March. So, we're in the middle of April right now. We haven't even started April sales. That's how far behind we are, because there's so much property changing hands. Now, not only is it just deeds and subdivisions and everything else they do, but when families pass on, like we had a big state come in recently, and that took a lot of time with both of our data auditors, because the family came from afar. Property never left dad's name to mom's name, now mom's gone, and so they have to sit and with the family, and really start going through properties, and that takes a lot of time as well. So, we are just, our sales are right behind us right now, and it's, it's taking myself, our office manager, and one of our appraisers to try and just keep us breathing, because it bottlenecks. It starts in the data office, and then the, it goes to our teacher office, and, and then out goes our affidavit of sales. When affidavit of sales come back, then it goes to the appraiser, and the appraisers have to go out on the properties and get them ready to go on the, on the books. So, we are, we are really in desperate need of this position, so we really appreciate your book yesterday.
Well, I mean, you know, I think we all are in favor, we want to give you what you need, you know, to perform your duties at work, so.
Uh, you're, you kind of explained the steps. I just want to understand more, like what does the data tech, what do they do? Like, help me understand what the breakdown is, what is it they're doing before they pass it to the assessor? What all has to happen in this one instance?
So, our data tech one is, she is, has taken one course, and she's passed that course. The data tech three, she has passed all the courses that she needs, and she is the one that trains the data tech one. And the data tech one that we have is fixing to go on maternity leave, and so that just leaves our data tech three to take a lot of it. So, when property sells, let's say you sell a piece of property to me, and then you go and record it at the clerk. So, every day, they have to pull everything that was recorded on that day. So, right now, they're pulling like the end of, of March, and they download all property transfers that were recorded on that day. Then they have to sit, and they have to go in, and they have to change the property's names, the addresses of the new owners, and get it ready to become the new owner's property, and then it, and then it has to go to our mappers, and then our mappers have to physically change it on our maps for ownership. And then, of course, it's a sale, so all of our appraisers have to get it on their route, so they go out and start, you know, the properties have to re-measure it, reappraise it to get it. Because that's how we get the properties up to market. So, I, my, my grandmother may have been living in her home for fifty years that she bought it for fifty thousand dollars. It's only going up three percent every year, right? And now I've bought it, and we all know what the market is now, so we have to, we have to go out and get it on the market.
So, this is that crucial piece that we have to have, all that data before they predict we need to get it, so that we can make it to our marketplace as a property?
Yes. All that change has to take place first, the name change, the ownership, the affidavit of sale, onto the maps. The appraiser's actually the last person to get it, to get that price to properly.
And then do they go from ones to twos to threes to top four?
Yeah, three is the top.
So, will she, will, will it be higher, becoming two at some point after a test, and then a couple of three, or?
They'll start out as a tech one.
They start as a tech one, then they move to a tech two after they pass their I double O class. Our, our data analysts probably will never make a tech three unless they take all of the I double O classics. And our data three has all of her I double O classes, and she is our trainer for data analysts.
Do you have to have a three? I'm speaking like, and I learned all these new numbers in, in the city world, and you gotta have a four, and you gotta have a.
We don't have to have a three, and actually, we just came to this last year and reclassified our two to a three. That's new to us, because we have to find a way to keep our people as well, and so when we reclassify that position, because she has more than what our average data analyst has. She is the one that is offering the knowledge and the training to get those people up to speed. So, we will probably never have another data three unless our data three moves on somewhere else. I hope not, but.
Okay. So, you're having to get all of the three?
No, 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 absolutely not.
Okay.
We just need another person in there in the office, start recording, and just changing the properties, and it all starts in the data department.
And bringing in another appraiser to help with that is putting a bind on his area as well, so it's, it's putting a bind on several different departments.
And he actually is a trainee as well, himself in the appraising field, he came from the data department, so that's why we're working on him right now, because he knows the position, and so it is useful for us.
Any questions?
I think we're all, if there's anyone who's told us, I don't know, yeah. Sorry.
No, it's not.
Property's not slowing down.
Yeah.
If you, anyone lives outside, I know Mr. Carlson's seen it, that traffic, I mean, properties are going up faster than we keep up on right now, it's crazy.
Do we hear? Do I have a motion to approve? We'll have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have our resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Okay, do we have any, any of these items that we need to pull and consider separately? Need to commit? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
How many can I ask you to approve?
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Paulson? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will try to be quick, we've got a few things. So, first of all, to rest the Happy Valley Park, after our last meeting, we did give direction and got procurement done for a contractor that we have on RFP over in Dick Digger Park. They were finishing up Armalga and London Road Parks, and they are over there as we speak, working on the tree. And I also have a billboard in the back of my truck that we picked up yesterday that we're going to post in the park with what's coming. So, we're, we're working on it, it's forthcoming. Also, over in that area of the world, we did open the intersection of West Loop and Lee Street last week. The contractor had worked on that, completed the intersection with blocks, cords, and the paving. We had instructed all the sign to put in, and it is working well. So, it is, it is a new improved intersection, it's very nice. We're looking about another six weeks to have the whole thing complete, and at that time, we will be the grand corral of victory, of credit, so. With that, we've also got a lot of other deals going on. We are on Fiesta right now, chip selling, we're also in Stanpipe, and we're still on sugar with all of our county crews and third parties, chip selling, marking, and we do have temperatures, so we're moving forward with that. We've also been out and about, we've attended several meetings here in the last week. Last week, we attended a meeting in Roswell, where the area and the region came together, and they were commenting on a forest service plan, their long-term plan that they're bringing out. To the public comment, the comments made by the board, which we were allowed to sit on and represent, it was pretty clear that there's significant opposition towards what they're wanting to do, which is take a significant piece of the Lincoln National Forest, Lincoln Gardens. I'm afraid it fell on deaf ears, but, you know, who made the statement, made the point, clear as a little bit, that people heard, and they'll come back, and the point's made. We also attended, in Al Gore yesterday, a Region Six broadband meeting. It was very informative, it was very enlightening that, you know, over in this corner of the state, we are not behind, but have progress in infrastructure, other than roads that need to be addressed and at least supporting. Whereas, we are not in the broadband business, at the same point, we do have franchise agreements and ways and grants that we can support that infrastructure going in. PSP was a part of that meeting, that they were happy we were represented there, and we'll be reaching out to, with what we can do to help support and others, so. Lot going on, real quick update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, elected officials, department.
Manager, Commissioners, very good to see you this morning. Going along with what Jason was talking about, the opening up of that intersection, the, my traffic division, the cat, is, we're, we're going to focus on that a little bit, and it's not going to be hammer people, I don't believe in that. I believe in education programs where folks will get stopped potentially, and, but they're, they're going to be warned, there's going to be a warning, you know, leeway time where folks are learning what they're supposed to be doing. Obviously, if there's an issue that needs to be addressed with citations, we'll be. But I, we always encourage our deputies, especially in these situations like this, to educate the public rather than enforce. So, we're, we're, we're going to back up the public works out there, make sure things go on, things are going to flow smoothly. And just having a presence out there helps a lot, so we just want people to be safe, that's all. It's a new, it's a new traffic pattern. I do want to thank Representative Brown, she's, she's still here. Um, I do wanna thank Representative Brown, she's still she's still here good. Uh, I wanted to thank you and for helping out and and your colleagues to shoot down the the anti-cop bill. I think that'll just be too late to uh that would have been a devastation to law enforcement. I talked to Lincoln y'all about that and we came up, they came up with something and we supported it that that would act as workable. I'm I'm assuming that y'all have seen the tragedy that happened up in Farmington with law enforcement. Where apparently the police department went to the wrong address for a search warrant. And they the uh occupant, one of the occupants ended up coming out rightfully so armed, saying, hey, who argued? Cause it apparently they weren't identified particularly. I don't know exactly how that, but. The occupant came out and was uh appeared to be justified in his actions. And he ended up being shot and killed by the the uh officers that were there. Uh subsequently, the the uh wife came armed, she didn't know, she came armed herself with with the deceased husband's firearm. From what we're hearing. And she was not injured because she probably figured out it was police. She 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 disarmed herself. But it was a tragedy and I I can't imagine uh how what it was like for Chief Heavy to uh come out and say, hey, uh we screwed up. We're sorry. We don't know what to do. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to fix this. So this is something that I I I wanna give y'all and of course, there's always knock on wood because anything can happen. But y'all support in in building up our infrastructure in the sheriff's office with our our super. We we stand by supervision. That that's how you you really try to keep stuff like that from happening is having adequate supervision, not even just adequate. But I call it intrusive leadership. You're always in there poking and and helping your folks and and teaching them. And I think this is a and this is a big teaching moment. We just had staff yesterday and I said, now let's let's get this filter down. We wanna make sure our folks are doing a good job. Let's make sure they keep doing a good job. I have an idea where I wanna even increase without being top-heavy with with too too many chiefs and not enough agents. But I wanna I have a we came up with an idea yesterday that I'm gonna bring forward. It's gonna be some reclassifications that are gonna cost you more money. I'll do it within my budget. But I I feel like it's something that's necessary to uh increase our supervisory presence. It's gonna give some folks some better training, more folks even better training. Uh, there you're about to hopefully approve Lieutenant Howard going to FBI I L E D A, uh command leadership. That's a great program. Um, we bring them here also. This is one that we feel like we need to go ahead and get a new lieutenant out to some training. And uh but we're gonna be bringing the trilogy. It's a it's a I L E D A. It's a it's a leadership trilogy that is tailored for law enforcement. And it's we 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 live we live and die by leadership. That that's that's my philosophy. Good leadership. And so but I I just I wanna, I know y'all have a lot of confidence in me and I appreciate that. But I I like to come in and and make sure you understand what we are doing to give you that confidence to continue for you to continue to have that confidence. We have a uh leadership program that uh my my son, who's lieutenant at the Carlsbad Police Department, he and I have developed. He teaches it. He teaches it in our facility for our folks, for Carlsbad, for our T two folks that that are interested, for uh Lee County folks. We also have, like I said, the FBI I L E D A program. Captain Farrellkill recently attended the FBI National Academy. That's one of the most prestigious uh leadership programs out there. So that's what we're doing. We are looking at expanding our footprint in different areas. I've already talked to you about that because our manning levels are coming up. We anticipate being full uh I would say by summer. I anticipate we're gonna be full. And uh we we have certified applicants coming in daily. Uh, we have unsi- well, weekly, I would say. Uncertified is a date. I mean, we got we got folks, the the uh apparently it's speeding. And I'm very happy about that. And without y'all's support, that couldn't happen. Because we can off we offer, we I I believe we're the premier law enforcement agency in in Southeast New Mexico or in New Mexico as it is. Because and it's because of your support. We have great equipment. We have great pay. We have great facilities and uh we have a great working environment. That that's what I provide is a great working environment by me and my staff. So continue to be confident. We're there for you. Um, I I and I I wanna be responsive to everything. Any of you call you. That's the service I want you to get from our agency. I want you to have that service. And I want our our citizens to have that service. So I guess this is a a a PR moment for the sheriff's office, but uh I'm very proud of what we do there. I I stick my chest out and I hang that that sheriff's office badge on me very proudly because it's not me. I mean, I am the sheriff. It is my office. I can get that. But it's my people that make it that way. So that's what I'm doing now is giving a big shout out to them and giving you that little confidence builder in in what we are doing. So with that, if anybody has any any questions or concerns, I'm happy to. Oh, additional, real quick. I know y'all are very interested in the uh the drug issues going on, the fentanyl. Uh, as a matter of fact, okay, here's what, here's some of the great work. One of our new deputies took off a a big cocaine load. We don't see cocaine that much. Out there, not doing interdiction, not doing, just just doing his job. And took off a load of cocaine, a decent sized load of cocaine. Not fentanyl, I meant actual cocaine, which is really cool. So I know y'all are interested in what's going on. You're interested in numbers. I do have a have a handout that I think I'm gonna hold on to because what I've done is I I did talk to the the executive executive director and deputy directors in Haida. They're both gonna come here and give you a presentation on what Haida is is doing for us as well. And I think I may break it up so that that y'all can just say it in different bites. Uh, I I'm gonna have Bobby Sullivan and Commander Leos come and give a presentation to y'all also. And I think it's gonna be very eye-opening. So uh that you got that to look forward to.
Okay. Appreciate your. Also, as an elected official today, I asked uh our one or a magistrate judges to come talk about a little about the program that uh we wanna look at. Under the electoral decision.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, before we get into, I mean, you had talked about about the uh community service issue. So I wanted to give an update about what the courts are doing globally. As you know, we were, the pandemic was uh had huge lockdowns and that was obvious throughout the state. But it also impacted the courts a lot. What people don't uh realize is that the courts remain open throughout the the time that they were locked down. Never missed a day, forty hours, we kept them in. Uh, the Supreme Court actually lifted all COVID restrictions starting April fourth, so we're we're back in full swing. There's gonna be some new uh in-person birth and remote hybrid hearings that are gonna remain in place that we we found were actually really as I say, beneficial to the court's economy, uh travel expenses. So we will be still doing a lot of stuff by video or remote. So I just wanna give you that update before we get into uh about the community service. Couple of weeks ago, I spoke to Commissioner Carlson about the trash area. And as we all know, there's an overwhelming amount of of garbage on the works and just in the county in general. And I've been approached before about setting up a community service pro- uh project for trash pickup, which the way it was the way it was thought of at the time was just exclusively community service, really courts have to be done there. Unfortunately, because we do have options, we can't do that. The thing, if the person is sentenced and has community service, they have to have an option of of where they can go. Uh, between Artesia and Carlsbad, I believe on my list, I've got about seventeen or eighteen different locations they can do community service. What I what I'd like to uh talk about is possibly having one set up through the county for trash pickup and maybe some other other things that can be taken care of through that little program. Chaz County does have one that is just exclusively through the county. The jail sets it up. They show up at the courthouse, you get there eight o'clock, you go pick up trash throughout the day, get your hours, they bring you back. Chaz County does have one that is just exclusive. So anybody sentenced to Chaz County has to go do the community service through that program. But again, because we have options through not only the city of Artesia, but other non-profit organizations, we do have to leave it open. Uh, what I'd like to see is is it's not what I'd like to see, but just to kind of an idea of the only way we can make it a specific type of requirement is if there's some kind of something to gain from it. Maybe like an educational component of of some sort, maybe like a like the impact of of what the the trash is doing. That would be the only way we would be able to do something more like specific and be able to sentence to possibly maybe an amendment to the uh the ordinances of feeling, something that may be part of the sentence that goes into that ordinance. I don't see that a lot in all honesty. I see the see see a few citations for littering, but that's only a fifty dollar fine by statute. Most people will walk in, they'll pay it. So there's no opportunity for me to see them, to give them an opportunity to maybe get a deferral or not have to pay the fines of doing of doing community service. Um, so that would end up being probably a legislative change as far as.
You're not seeing any of the uh you're not seeing any illegal dumping happening before.
Not a lot, unless they're coming to Carlsbad. I don't see a lot of that in in my court. I I do see a little bit of the litter. I do see the the junk dilapidated structures. We ordinance it, but nothing of illegal dumping.
Does this go in mind with Steve was telling us that the law or or for my county, you want to just hold out your court nowadays?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I said, I don't I don't have enough cases that come through under under ordinances or under uh the littering statute to kind of actually explore into that. Most of my stuff is is full mysteries in traffic. I said, the only the thing with the littering citations, when they come through, it's a fifty dollar fine that most people will pay out the window rather than actually coming into the courtroom, you know. I haven't actually had a chance to uh actually dive into that. I'd love to.
And I can help you with some of this too. Uh, I can do some some uh, I know that with the DWI program, uh they're used to, especially juveniles. They were sentenced to uh pick up trash and uh deputies would supervise them. Uh, I think uh Cindy even had a ban for that. The program is kind of, I think through COVID is where it ended up dying.
It, well, it's still running. We still have, we're still running this. So we'll do one weekend in Carlsbad, one weekend in Artesia. And that's the reason why we can send people to that specifically is it is built, there is a DWI education component to that. So it might be uh in the statute, their their first offense, their minimum thirty thirty hours of community service, that they actually have to go to uh the DWI program and do the trash pickup for them on weekends.
Who do we need, who do we need to work with you at the county level? I know the sheriff, obviously, but who else can we get to work with you to get this program started?
I I would think it would be needed to have a decision of where it's gonna worth the program's gonna be supervised. Is that gonna be the jails? How it works? Is it gonna be at the department and how you would like to develop it? But once you've got it developed on county level, I can just add it to my list. The key to it is convenience. I mean, I hate to use that word in this context, but people will will use a program that is available to. If it's something that's that's widely available, I mean, we're we're a twenty-four seven community. Cindy's got the DWI program for Saturday and Sunday, maybe something Monday through Friday, uh eight to eight to five. And what I would suggest is four hour blocks, eight to twelve, ready for lunch, one to five. So where people have an availability for that for this uh type of community service, they're willing to dip and they're willing to jump into saying, you know, this this uh available program doesn't have the hours I can work with. But this one does all of that.
What would you suggest, Sheriff?
Um, I think I I think the judge is 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 spot on with this. What to actually make it work. Y'all need to put a pot, a little pot of money aside, which is overtime money, because that's how we do it through sentencing. You gotta have an incentive. Deputy deputies gotta be paid. And to get them to come on their off time to work it, which they will. Um, usually, a lot of times, it's our court security folks that that do it most. We have a lot of money set aside for that overtime pay for those deputies to go out there and supervise. I would I would not even consider putting burden on the board. His folks, he doesn't have enough people to do what he needs to get done, unless he wants it, which I don't. I don't I don't, I can't speak for you, but I know your people are spread them. More and more so, it's gonna have to come off the sentencing from the judge. Because these are, these are individuals being sentenced six months to the jails and then you also gotta add in community service. And we're blessed because we have seventeen different operations. So let's say you have a seventy-year-old man, they're not gonna have him out there in the thunderous, great weather, getting in a bad health. Or somebody that may not commute that because they have allergies or whatever. So we have sixteen other opportunities for them to provide services to the community. Going with the DWI program, that's part of the sentencing, so they have to do that. So I think we've got to focus on what the judge can do while someone's in jail and saying, I still want you to provide community services for incarcerated. And then there's some kind of benefit to that. Because most most individuals in statute, there is no two-thirds time, there's a half time. If you uh you contribute to the community, you work for the jail, wherever it may be within the county, that individual at that point can have the opportunity to apply and get good time. Doesn't mean he's gonna get it, but he can apply to the judge and the judge can say, I was gonna give you six months. You worked really hard for three months. I'm gonna knock off the last three months. So I I think a lot of it goes with statute, the judges order the sentence individual to provide community service. I I was more referencing using your personnel to supervise it. The 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 people out there, I I know you're you're just spread them. I I don't know. If we decided, if we had, we decided to go through the jail, it would be another rehabbed allocated position, another shift over position that's managed. I already have a a road crew that does that. We do that right now. They're not sentenced to it, but they're not sentenced to community services. They're sentenced to work or they were wanting to work. And we take that criteria and we pick up them on the road too. Again, COVID has has hampered a lot of that and we're back on the road to uh to wo- to where we want to work. So I have individuals now, I have two, two departments, one apartment, uh it's road crew that does nothing but that or whatever else we need. We've helped with the sheriff's posse's out here. We've helped with the side of the road. We've helped with cleaning alleys. So a lot of that goes off of me and that individual talking what part of the town or city or the county you wanna go pick up. We've had out here in Avalon, about three years ago, we spent a week out there picking up that area. We've helped with any nonprofit. We helped with the zoo about three or four years ago. It's out there off of Waterloo for wheat and working on their bond. So and all those individuals that did that work were were had the opportunity to be uh be put in for good time and be able to.
I think it'll be a kind of a two-fold thing, Pete. What we're talking about is people that are already incarcerated, then there's also the people that um are gonna defer sentence. And I I don't like to find uh juveniles just for the simple fact that who's gonna pay their ticket? The kid's not gonna do it on the data. So I like to give the kids something, an opportunity to to learn from that, but also for it to be taken out of them to realize that, you know, what I did wasn't correct. So I I try to give community service or, you know, some kind of a deferral for the for those individuals. Um, also, like, you know, I stepped out just to do an arrangement that gave a individual a deferral, their license. She had to pay court costs and that brings another point. A bill was passed and I don't remember which bill it was off the top of my head, but it's eliminating the court fees out of all court fees, eventual fees, anything that we would would assess in court, even on a deferral, we're losing that. So as I said, losing it is 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 kind of a bad thing, but it kind of, it's gonna make us have to look at sentencing differently. Because I can, I consider, you know, if I if I'm, if you've got a ticket, twenty-five hour speeding ticket, I defer that you're not paying the twenty-five, but you're paying the sixty-one in court costs. That's part of that punishment, I guess you could say. That's part of that punishment, I guess you could say. But without that, those court costs, I'm gonna have to look at different ideas on how to sentence people, not only for them to benefit from the deferral, but also how to benefit from maybe learning to not to do it again. And community service may be that option. That, uh, that law goes into effect, uh, July first of next year, where we won't be collecting those fees anymore. We'll have to develop some kind of different, uh, approach to sentencing.
So this can be good times to?
Potentially, it depends on the, 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 but, kind of, the, the one that doesn't give a good time, I don't, I don't, I don't grant her, I, you know, granted it sparingly over the last twenty years, uh, but it could be an option for good time.
No, I, I know that we've gotten away from taking the prisoners out on the road. It's typically been through the court system where they're in jail and they take them out. You know, if, if you do that, how many people are gonna go, gonna show up on a four hour, break the day into two, four hour period, they're gonna be hauling two guys around to go pick up trash? That's nonsensical. I mean, you can't do something cost effective that way. I wouldn't think, I mean, the four deputies out there, gosh.
Yeah, we, we, we've got to develop a program.
We simply will have one deputy for, for, because they're not prisoners.
Yeah.
They, these are free citizens, so, I mean, all you're, all you, all my deputies really doing is make sure they don't get killed on highway. They're, they're not, you know, hurt, no, but they're making sure they work also. And, uh, of course, I mean, that, that's a, that's a thing, I said, we're, we're coming to be fully staffed. There's gonna be less overtime on the tenies police force. We, we personally look at grants, because there's grant money, it's free money. But this, I, I think we could, I think it would be, uh, palatable to the deputies, they feel like, well, yeah, I need a little extra money. I can go out there and supervise, plus, we're, uh, we're cleaning stuff up. Because all over Facebook, oh, that's all you ever see is, ah, there's trash, there's trash, there's a trashy place. Well, yeah, because of the wind blows and, and, you know, we don't. My, my whole deal was, the whole idea popped in my head and I talked to the judge about it because I was driving out two eighty-five and it looked like a picture.
It does.
And, you know, I, I see where you're coming from.
But you can have them for two days, a week.
Yeah, if, if the judge can send them to us. The judge is, can send them to us and say, hey, here's what you got. Y'all put a little pot of money over here, uh, and say, all right, it's gonna be paid for, to the deputies to go supervise. And we, I don't know, we got that so many coordinated, obviously, but I, it's not, I don't think it's a huge mess. It's, it's just a matter of, of y'all saying, here's, here's this person, they have this many hours. And we, we send another, and it'd be a form, we send a form back to the judge saying they've completed it, or they're not completing it, they had an attitude, they, 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 you know, blah, blah, blah. I think. So, Bert, can you work with the sheriff and, and the judge possibly trying to formulate some type of program?
Sure, sure.
Would that be a good idea?
Yeah.
Do, I'm very pleased what I'm hearing here, that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, you know, I would support overtime. Whatever we can do to start picking trash up again, uh, I'm all for.
Just kinda thinking about.
You ought to work at, whatever you can work out, I think you'll have support here.
Yeah, you know, I, I've been with the judge and the sheriff, and I've been with both of them, very supporting both, so.
I would support a deputy sheriff who spends a lot of time trying to catch somebody illegally, that's, that you can go see.
So, you know, and then I think that, that'd be a good idea, you know, what, I spoke to one of the officers that does the weekend trash pickup and he says, you know, they'll go and pick up, they'll pick up a mile stretch and get it looking good, they'll pick up anything. Tires don't matter, I just said, uh, I think, you know, bumper of vehicle at one point, so, you know, it's.
Never split tires in practice in public media.
Right, but he, what he said, the point I was trying to get to, he didn't want to jump in that part, but, um, is that he can clean up that stretch this week, next week it's just as bad as it was before. And it is, so, even if we do have just a one or two people that are doing it, that's another, that's another, you know, chip in that block. It's, it's a never ending thing, right, but at least at this point, one or two people, you know, group of people, you're still chipping away at that.
Well, my understanding is they're all pretty flexible in your sentencing, I mean, you could say, hey, instead of paying a fine, is that what you'd like to do off the service? And I'd say, yep, okay, well, guess what, you can go pick up trash.
Yeah, and like I said, with the, with the elimination of fees, for, for DWI fee, the fees for just a simple DWI is two hundred and seven dollars. So, even if we suspend the fine or defer it or, or even on deferring on the traffic ticket, they're, that part of that sentencing part is eliminated, so we can go into, uh, different, different scenarios in sentencing. Community service would definitely be a, uh, an option.
Well, along those lines, if you get somebody that's started it, the community sees it, and I think you'll get some private folks, not associated with the courts, that will jump in and do some picking up. We've got which organization that does the diving rockers and stuff on a group team basis. There are a lot of people out there that would be willing to help particularly and probably help organize it to this day.
And there's, there's a lot of people that we, you know, we send them to these places to do community service. And once they're done with their twenty-four, forty, or whatever hours, they're going back and they're continuing, you know, it's, they enjoy it, they get to enjoy the people that they, that they're working with and they have no problem going back. We want to do them the kind of, the good success story, because he did his community service for one of the fire stations and he went back for several years thereafter to keep doing the job that he was doing. And he did it on a volunteer basis, so it's, there's always that potential.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you, man.
On board, whatever you wanted to, uh, support with.
Yeah. Any other elected officials or department up there?
If I may. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just wanna give you a little bit of information about why the legislature decided to dispense with, um, fees for what was just talked about. Uh, fines are still in place, that did not change. But, um, we have data that show that the amount of money being spent to chase after fee collection was huge and the return just wasn't there. And so, um, our position, and I voted for this, is that it, it's a legitimate function of government. Government should be paying for our courts, you know, whatever needs to be done there. Uh, but to keep putting fee, um, fees down and then adding to those as we go, that's really not fair either to people. They shouldn't pay the fines, but there are other ways to, um, to streamline the court system. And so I think, I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but it was costing something like three million dollars to chase after fees and they were getting back twenty thousand, something like that. It was just very lopsided, so that's why that changed. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, anybody else? Okay.
Next legislative updates, I think we've probably covered a lot for today. Um, next, travel request content agenda.
Okay, any questions or items that need to be removed and looked at? And also do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a vote to, 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 or second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, call for vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Henry?
Carlson?
Yes.
I don't believe we have any emergency business. Um, legislators, elected officials, comments, announcing updates, I believe we've got everybody in our mouth. Uh, next, county managers' comments. Um, I just wanted to start off first by saying thank you to everybody, elected officials, um, directors, staff, all the support. Everyone's been really helpful and reached out, um, and said their support, so I just wanted to thank everybody. Um, it's been very helpful and very nice. Um, Jason had mentioned a few meetings that were going on. Um, he was nice enough to attend a couple of those on the county's behalf. I believe the sheriff might have been in attendance on a couple of those as well. Um, I did attend the Carlsbad Department of Development meetings, um, which was very nice and informative. Um, Representative Brown was also there at the meeting. And Susan Crockett, she was also there, she was nice enough to introduce me to a lot of the, uh, local officials and leaders, so got to meet quite a few people there at the Department of Development meeting. And that's all I have right now.
Commissioners?
Well, I want to. Um, just wanna welcome Florida, we're very excited to work with you, um, and glad that you're kind of settling in and you're excited about the pathway forward, it's like, it's gonna be a great thing. Um, want to thank the county, um, the assessor's office, it seems like the ladies are working very hard and I'm very appreciative, you know, of that, you have an important job within the county. Um, so I just always feel it's very important that we recognize the hard work that's being done. So, anything that we can do to help with that, please let us know, um, other than that, that's really all I have.
Good for you.
I'm pretty short, uh, just thanks everyone for doing it. Really glad to hear about the upcoming reports. Just like, whatever you're gonna show up, homicide is about it, uh, Austin was doing a report last night. Wrong thing for the sudden all of our. Austin, I had a report last night on, on drug overdoses and how they now exceeded COVID deaths into the same timeframe. Thought that was pretty interesting. Um, it's a major problem across the country, so I'll be really interested to hear the, uh, the reports, whoever who can take those off the streets. Um, I have a couple of things just to, to, to.
Mr. Ball?
For Berta, the chair looks good. Oh, we've got still to remove from the desk upstairs.
Not yet.
Uh, I wanna thank Representative Brown for coming in and giving us a rundown of some of the good that happened in the last legislative session. I think a lot of us here hear all the negative that comes out of it and we've ended up with a justified so sour taste in our mouth, um, from the legislative session, but it's nice to hear that there was some positive that came, came out of it with the monies that are being put towards our road projects down here. Some of that is, is positive refreshment, maybe it's not all bad going out there. And really, that's all I got for you.
Mr. Beard?
I'll go with what you just said, uh, some of the positive stuff that did happen out there. I, some of it I haven't heard about, I don't think it totally offsets all the rest of it, but it is encouraging for something, but, uh, and I, Catherine as well, I am very excited what I'm hearing about something maybe that happened on a big basis to clean up the roads around here. It is, you know, I could, I'm not much on ordinance, but I could support an ordinance to go back, paper bags instead of plastic bags, because those things.
Blow everywhere.
Uh, they're all over the country, you know, a lot of it's not out the window, a lot of it's just blows off the back of work trucks. But, uh, I mean, you know, paper bags are a crop, they're made out of trees that grow and grow again, so it is a renewable natural resource. So, I'd like to sit down and, and I'd like to send that in. Uh, but that I'll give.
Well, I, I will thank, uh, our elected officials like the sheriff and, uh, the magistrate judge and stuff that be willing to come here and talk about, uh, ideas that can keep, can keep continuously work on keeping our roads and, and bargages, plenty of trash, because, uh, you know, people that's never been to this area, they judge it on how they drive through it and it looks like when they're coming into the, into the city. And it's just a major, you know, the people do that, and when they see trash and stuff littering, all the bargages and stuff against, stuck in the bomb arc fences and, and that, it does give a good impression of any county. And, uh, so, we want, we wanna start off a best foot forward, the people coming in, so we're gonna work at that. And I appreciate the judge, the sheriff, and all of them being able to work with us. Uh, also, I was really, uh, you know, kinda do it, but upset when there were, uh, you know, just the whole attitude of some of the people up north, whenever they're here, uh, in Lee County, in southeast New Mexico, they have such a, uh, bad attitude towards us. This is a sad thing, especially when we contribute so much to the lifeblood of New Mexico. So, that's sad, maybe we can change that. Anyone else?
Next thing we have is executive session.
Okay, I guess we need a motion for the board to go into executive session according to saving New Mexico open meetings access in ten, that fifteen, that one, that eight, per, colon, paragraph two, which authorizes the board of county commissioners to go into the executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, contract personnel, county manager contract for Rivera, Casal, and Cash Taylor. Uh, will present that and other contract matters, uh, personnel matters. Do I have a motion to do that?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, that can call for the vote.
Beer?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes.
Henry? Carlson?
Yes. Okay, so, how long are we talking? You say? Forty-five minutes, thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, those are thirty.
They all rolled their eyes.
Ten more, ten more to finish, ten more to finish.